Judge Jones, please. I pray to God how great you are in all of the universe. I want to thank you for this day, this is the day we should all be here and we're going to rejoice and be glad in here. First, I count on jurors, I count on commissions as they visit the President's County. Always lead them and guide them in the right direction and in the right path. First, for the President's County Court, our family, first, the Texas, we pray for America, we pray for our President and his Captain, we pray for our troops, we pray for all of our law enforcement officers who lie or in jeopardy each day. Now, God be with each of us throughout this day. In Jesus' name, everybody say amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, Captain Jones. Second item on the agenda is call for citizens input and our concerns. Here in nine, we'll go to number three is presentation and discussion. A is a report regarding National Association of Counties Legislative Conference in Washington, DC.
Judge, commissioners, um, first of all, let me start off by saying thank you for allowing me to attend. Um, I apologize that I was not able to fulfill Commissioner Catalina's request that it was a one-way trip. I did return, but that was his last request before I left that it was a one-way trip.
I'm worried about the other people on the plane with you.
The National Association of Counties has, uh, four meetings a year. Uh, they have the annual meeting, of course, they have the legislative meeting, and then they have two other, uh, Western Interstate Conference, and then they have a regular board meeting in the fall. The one I attended was the legislative conference, and as you could imagine, in Washington right now, uh, things are very interesting. Uh, I want to talk about what NACO means to us, and I know that each of you are very familiar with what Texas Association of Counties does for us at the legislative level. In fact, we probably would be better served this morning if maybe we were over testifying on Senate Bill Two, uh, instead of being here today. But, um, National Association of Counties to us at the national level is, is the only advocacy group that we have that can let our legislators know the impact of proposed bills. And, uh, they do a tremendous job. Uh, some of those, uh, platforms that they stand on is they, is they stand against unfunded mandates. Um, one of the committees that I actually get to sit on as vice chair is the Immigration Reform Task Force. Um, during our, uh, meetings there, we had, uh, as you can imagine, immigration is very, uh, it's a issue full of passion for people, and, uh, whenever you try to fit in politics, family, passion, uh, sometimes sparks fly. In fact, there was a lot of protests, uh, around some of the congressional buildings while I was there. Um, and we've, I think you've probably seen what has happened with, in Travis County, with the, uh, the governor and the sheriff not having the same views on sanctuary cities and, and I, I voiced, uh, my opinion concerning that. Uh, it could potentially come between Commissioners Court as a body and the sheriff in any given county because the governor is restricting the funds, um, for, uh, the sheriff and those, those funds that were allocated federally, uh, for her at the time. So, those are just issues that, uh, that we, how does, how else does NACO benefit us? Uh, one of the ways is the State Criminal Alien Assistance Program. So, here in Brazos County, it's called SCAP Funding. Um, it's, it's a, a fund that the federal government recognized that we, that they should pay for if there's prisoners that are being held here in Brazos County on federal issues that, for however long they're here, uh, the federal government should have to pay that bill. And, uh, in two thousand and sixteen, that amounted to forty-one thousand, two hundred and three dollars just for Brazos County. The NACO prescription card, uh, that's something that we hopefully will try to rejuvenate in the near future. I know that Mayor Berry at the time, um, I came to College Station, went to the City of Bryan, and we had those sent out via, uh, post, uh, through the post, through the electric bills, I believe, at the time. Just try to tell you how long we've been doing it. But, uh, the final number as of last month that we've given back and you, as the Commissioners Court, are responsible for, have given back to the citizens two million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and a few cents change. Um, two and a half million dollars on a thirty-eight-hundred-dollar or thirty-nine-hundred-dollar investment annually. Um, so, the last thing I'll leave you with, if any of you want to attend the conferences, um, I, I will tell you, the last time I was here and y'all were contemplating approving mine, I saw there was two in Florida, there was one in, uh, California that you approved besides mine. This year, the legislative conference is in Columbus, Ohio. Um, you may want to skip a year, I don't know what's next year, but I just don't, I've looked up Columbus and I just don't think there's much to do in Columbus.
My volunteer's in Hawaii.
Uh, but, uh, if you do decide, uh, you will be, uh, treated to a, uh, free registration, which is about a five-hundred-dollar expense that Brazos County will not incur, and I would appreciate your interest and your attendance, and I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any. Otherwise, that'll be the end of my presentation.
Well, for the record, I'm glad to see you made it back.
I'm glad it's on record. I will hold that over your head for a long time, Commissioner.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
We appreciate you going to Washington, DC and, uh, and bringing back the report.
Thank you, sir.
And thank you for the T-shirt.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Uh, the next is an update regarding Project Eastwood.
Hello, good morning. I still have somebody's phone here.
That's the recorder.
Oh, that's the recorder. Oh, okay, well, thank you. Hey, I, I apologize that I didn't bring T-shirts, I'm behind the ball already. Uh, my name is Josh Abramson, I work for Eastwood Airport Management at, uh, Eastwood Airport. Uh, we're a contractor for Texas A&amp;M, and I just want to take this as an opportunity just to, uh, give a thanks to the county commissioners for your support and also give you some updates. Um, I have some handouts here, and it's really kind of, I have seven copies. So, what I started out with is just a little bit of a map of the airport to kind of indicate where some of these improvements have taken place. I spent, uh, I've been here for two years, I spent the first year and a half talking about what we're going to do, people got tired of talking about what we're going to do, so this is an opportunity to tell you about what we're doing, and this is a part of, uh, my first, um, public address in, in a series that I want to make to the, the local governments and pushing for College Station and City of Bryan next. Um, but I want to just hit on a little bit, give you a little bit of a, an overview, starting first with the entrance shades that we, uh, just recently installed at the airport. Uh, you no longer have to have it rain inside your car when you roll down the window to go in and out, it's just one of those small little things to help, uh, inviting to the community. You also see an LED sign there in the center point, uh, that's where we can really improve and work on our welcome message to people that are coming into the community as well as leaving the community, and so we're really, uh, excited about that opportunity. The next slide is the McKenzie Terminal Improvements. The bit, I'm, I'm good, the room that you are looking in is the, going to be the new ticket holding area. We're expanding the ticket holding area so that men, women, and babies don't have to share the single whole potty that we have in the existing holding area after security screening. Also, once we complete construction, you'll be able to purchase a cup of coffee or a snack and not have to throw it away in the TSA line because it's on the correct side of the screening. So, with that comes, uh, those improvements, more comfortable spaces, a larger space, and, and better utilizing our existing footprint on there. Another large improvement that we have just kicked off, uh, started with the demolition of, uh, the Quanget hangar there, is our new general aviation terminal. Uh, this project right here is going to be the front door for people that come into the general aviation side. So, those are our armed forces, uh, the pilot training that comes into there, uh, student pilots, as well as the game day traffic, and, uh, just about most of the decision makers that fly into our community, uh, that fly into Eastwood, uh, they will come in through this new front door entrance of the general aviation terminal. Additionally, we finished our rebranded website. Uh, we've updated the website, we actually have flight information on there, a clean look without a lot of clutter. Uh, we had done so much is that to, uh, everybody shares in what we have to update, uh, and, and have on our pages as a government website. Um, we actually have an individual separate website that has all the required information on it, and this is focused on the traveler. Uh, we'll continue to update pictures and, and, uh, information on here through the website, you'll even be able to purchase your cup of coffee while you're in the TSA line and have it ready for you on the other side once construction's complete. We're not quite there yet on there, and it's also a multilingual, we have seven languages on the website, uh, that, uh, actually, we just looked at analytics yesterday and it's frequently used. Finally, is a larger announcement, a pretty good announcement, I'm happy to talk about, American Airlines is going to be bringing in a larger aircraft into the community. Uh, now, it's all relative, we're not talking seven thirty-sevens here, but we're talking about a CRJ seven hundred. It's a sixty-five passenger dual-class aircraft. That means it has first class and then, uh, the basic economy in, in the back, and, you know, that, that really speaks well for our market. That means that they have, um, uh, they're, they're, they're happy with our market that we produce, uh, enough revenue and enough passenger flow to facilitate a larger aircraft. So, this aircraft will come in pretty strong in April, uh, phases back out a bit, it'll be a bit of a mixed fleet, uh, as we start to fill out and compete for other communities for these aircraft. So, I'm real excited about all the updates that have come out with those, and I have one more thing, uh, while we're speaking on the Hill. I am also a, uh, vice chairman for a, um, aviation, a small community air service working group. With the FAA Extension Safety and Security Act of two thousand and sixteen, Senator Thune put in Section twenty-three oh three, uh, to create this group. So, I'm the vice chair of a thirty-member group, representatives from the Airline Palace Association, the union members, uh, airline executives, airport executives, mayors, Department of Transportation's from the state organizations, uh, professors, uh, so there, there's a lot of a mix of people, and it's our goal to improve small community air service. And there's really four initiatives that we're working on, is to work on airport funding, uh, from, uh, Federal Aviation Administration and ways to better utilize airport funding. Uh, once again, that unfunded mandate is a, rings true with us as well on there. Uh, the pilot training, uh, there is a, a need for pilot training, uh, actually globally, and we're going to complete, compete on the global market for pilot training. Where it concerns small communities the most is, is that those are the small communities, those are the small routes. When they start running out pilots to fly airplanes, it's going to be the small communities that they pull the aircraft from. Uh, the Essential Air Service Program and Small Community Air Service Development Grant Program, there's acronyms, I'm not going to try to throw those out, we were actually recipient of that, we still hold the grant today, and that is for our solicitation to help, um, provide service to Atlanta on there. And then finally, um, public-private partnerships and, and how, uh, some examples of that throughout the nation. So, that's just my general update. Uh, I'm open to any questions, and of course, anytime that you guys want to come by and, uh, take a look at these, uh, items firsthand, I'd be happy to.
Okay. Pleasure.
I'd like to just a few minutes.
Yes.
Uh, thank you for what you do out at Eastwood, and we should be up there to showing, and, uh, it's really appreciated.
Thank you.
Really like the, uh, all the things that you mentioned that you've done here, appreciate that because this is a, and will become much more of a gateway to our community for people, uh, that first impression or that continuing impression is always important. Hey, on your, uh, website, do you have a connection to the destination Aggieland app?
Uh, so, we are the number one referred to Aggieland, uh, on there, and it's actually a banner in the middle of the website that actually changes as you mouse over, so the answer is yes.
Okay, good, because that's, that's the way to get you guys connected to all the rest of the community, and we appreciate that.
We're, we're very much into the partnership with, with that group, for sure.
Great, thanks.
Is there any hope that they will give us, like, uh, maybe?
There is hope. So, I, I have to be careful, but yes, there is hope.
That's all.
Okay, thank you for your time today.
All right.
Thanks, Jeff.
We'll consider and take action on Agenda Ibs four three sixteen, number four is proclamation seventeen dash zero one five declaring April sixth, two thousand and seventeen as World War One Remembrance Day in Brazos County.
Do we have anybody here to receive us today?
Yes, sir, we got, we have a crew, actually.
All right. Well, why don't you come up?
You want us all to come up, sir?
Yes, that'd be fine, we'll, I'll read the proclamation and then, uh, allow anybody that wants to speak.
John Ward.
John?
Greg Bailey.
Greg.
And, and, plus.
Randy, are you?
We got Ellen down there, too.
Can you squeeze us all in, or can we?
I think, I think it will do.
Sure. Yeah, thank you.
There is a website. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Let me read the proclamation, and then I'll give y'all a chance, any of you that would like to speak. Uh, World War One Remembrance Day, whereas April sixth, two thousand and seventeen marks the centennial of America's declaration of war against Imperial Germany and America's entry to the First World War. And whereas men and women of Brazos County have served with distinction in the armed forces for the Great War and the wars to follow, and they continue to serve in the defense of our freedom in the wars against terrorism, and whereas Brazos County is the home of countless veterans of all military service and is the final resting place for over eight hundred men and women who served our nation honorably during the First World War, including thirty who died during the conflict. And whereas Brazos County is also the home of Texas A&amp;M University, who had more than twenty-three hundred of its students, staff, faculty, serving world, uh, serving in the war, including fifty-nine students who paid the ultimate sacrifice, and those who, uh, and those injured in the war who received an education through the Federal Board of Vocational Education after the conflict. Whereas the campus of Texas A&amp;M University located in Brazos County served as a training camp for over four thousand US Army personnel who received instruction, uh, radio and auto mechanics as machinists, blacksmiths, farriers, and hosted, uh, Signal Corps, uh, School of Meteorology, the only one of its kind among the allied nations during the war. And whereas Texas Agricultural Extension Service headquartered in Brazos County played a significant role in the war's effect around the state in food production, cotton marketing, food preservation, working with state and federal councils of defense, Red Cross, Liberty Bond Drives, and, and war-saving stamps. And whereas the citizens of Brazos County answered the call of service to their, uh, country during the Great War as soldiers, sailors, marines, civilians, contractors, nurses, educators, and in other capacities, making this a shared experience both in the front lines in Europe and in the Caribbean, on the oceans, and s- small towns of rural fields and military camps across the United States. And whereas the United States Congress has officially created the World War One Centennial Commission to educate, commemorate, and honor this event in our history, and, and the state of Texas has created the Texas World War One Centennial Comm- Commemoration to do the same. And whereas more than four million American families sent their sons, daughters, to serve in the uniform during the Great War, with a hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and sixteen US soldiers giving their lives in combat, combat, and another two hundred thousand were wounded. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Brazos County Commissioners Court do hereby, uh, encourage all citizens to remember and commemorate the America's entry into the Great War and to the sacrifice that has awaited its ci- citizens a hundred years ago, and do hereby proclaim April sixth, two thousand and seventeen as World War One Remembrance Day in Brazos County, proclaim April fourteenth, uh, of March, two thousand and seventeen.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Anybody that would like to speak?
I, I would, I would just have a few, uh, few remarks. Uh, Judge Peters, members of the Commission, uh, Court, on behalf of our Brazos County Centennial, World War One Centennial Committee, and we have more members who couldn't make the meeting, uh, we'd like to thank you for officially proclaiming April sixth, two thousand and seventeen, World War One Remembrance Day in Brazos County. More importantly, though, I'd, I'd like to accept this proclamation on the behalf of the men and women who answered our country's call one hundred years ago and who served honorably and faithfully, especially those who lost their lives in service to our nation. As a token of that service and sacrifice, the Centennial Committee would like to present each of you with a remembrance poppy pen. From the inspiration of the poem On Flanders Field, and through the efforts of Ms. Moina Michael, the poppy has become the symbol of remembrance for all veterans. Uh, we ask that you join us in wearing it.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
We do appreciate it, sir.
Just thank you.
We did have a motion, and it was seconded, we haven't voted.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number six is approval of nonprofit organization application for Brazos County inmate work crew labor, uh, to CHI St. Joseph's Health Foundation for, uh, Grand Fondo, March twenty-sixth, two thousand and seventeen.
Move for approval.
Second. Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number seven is payment authorization to Christ Proctor Associates LLP in the amount of fifty-eight hundred and fifty dollars for, uh, record review analysis for the district attorney's office if payment authorization was not obtained in advance. Move approval.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number eight, request by tax collector to increase the change fund.
Second.
Motion made seconded. Seven thousand, I mean, is that what we need to, I mean, we increased it to five to seven thousand, and she just found that that's not enough change, five, it wasn't enough change, I think, but.
Wrong.
Yep. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number nine is approval of Humana Summary Plan Document for two thousand and seventeen.
So, we removed it from the agenda, we have some other things we need to do, but not remove.
We're all for a motion that we removed.
Okay, motion's been made to remove it from the agenda. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number twelve is approval of the January two thousand and seventeen Treasury Report.
Remove approval.
Second. Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number thirteen is tax refund application for following.
Remove approval of A through C.
Motion made seconded to approve A through C. Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number fifteen is personnel change stats.
Remove approval.
Second. Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number sixteen is payment claims, claim to be paid by Brazos County, claim number seven one five three five seven two through claim number seven one five three eight three zero.
Second.
Motion made seconded in discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. No motion carries. Number seventeen is acknowledgment of Brazos County Council of Governments Independent Auditories Report and Financial Statement for the year ending September thirty, two thousand and sixteen. Number eighteen, Sheriff's Board on Inmate Population, Sheriff.
Morning, Judge, Commissioners. Our peak in the last twenty-four hours is six hundred and thirty-six inmates. Five hundred and sixty-four of those are male, seventy-one are female. We have fifty-eight on ankle monitor and seventeen in.
Thank you, Sheriff. Uh, number nineteen is natural interest items and possible future accused topics.
I had the opportunity to attend the Conference of Urban Counties', uh, membership meeting last Wednesday, and of course, Senate Bill Two was a major topic of discussion. I did acquire a copy of the agendas and some other information for each of you, and, uh, if you would like to take one, uh, the legislative initiatives, uh, are a part of that, uh, package, and I think that, uh, they represent very well what, uh, uh, the District Clerk was visiting about earlier, issues that are of importance to Brazos County, particularly Senate Bill One. Now that House Bill Fifteen has been presented in the House, uh, the likelihood of further and more robust discussions on, uh, appraisal caps is likely. Uh, so, the testimony is going on over there today, but, uh, wanted to call that to everyone's attention. In particular, there's a graph, uh, or a table in here that, uh, talks about, uh, fifty-five pers- well, about fifty-five percent of property tax is a function of, uh, school districts in the state of Texas, and there is a very, uh, I think, revealing, uh, graph here that, uh, talks about the state of Texas's contribution in addition, uh, to property tax, contrasting where they were in two thousand and eight as to where they are today. But I'd like to call that to your attention. Would like to suggest that we maybe have a future agenda item where we have a presentation on what the potential impact of Senate Bill Two, uh, if it were to pass, uh, would mean to Brazos County.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
On that same note, um, I'm a part of the Texas Association of Counties', uh, Legislative Committee, and we were, committee members were asked to...
on what the potential impact of Senate Bill Two, uh, if it were to pass, uh, would mean to Brazos County.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
On that same note, um, I'm a part of the Texas Association of Counties', uh, Legislative Committee, and we were, committee members were asked to, um, contact their legislators, and I did that, and I'm encouraging the, the commissioners to do the same, Judge, because, uh, we're having the information and not, um, sending it forth is just not enough. We've got to let our representatives know what affects us, how it affects us. Um, we have one in particular that has been saying, what, uh, where are these unfunded mand- mandates? So, uh, my letter, uh, did highlight a few of them for him. We also have a problem, or we have in Texas a concern and a challenge to meet the needs of mental health. Um, those that, um, need the service in Brazos County, uh, we do our very best, thanks to the sheriff and his special initiative, that's, um, that's very helpful, but that's not, uh, meeting the needs of all of the population and the families, um, and those are expenses that fall squarely on our shoulders as commissioners, so we need to voice our concerns about that. So if you'll help us write letters to your, uh, representatives and let them know that you know that these are unfunded mandates, when they don't fund something and they expect the county or the citizens to take care of it, that's unfunded mandates. So please, voice your concerns, and thanks, Steve.
Well, the one thing I neglected to mention is, is, uh, did have the opportunity to personally deliver our proclamation, uh, our, our, our resolution in, uh, uh, you know, in opposition to Senate Bill Two, and it was, uh, received by each of our local representative's offices.
I do have one other thing, Judge. I attended the Brazos County Chamber Day Committee Meeting yesterday, and they're still needing volunteers, so I realize that Chili Fest has challenged, um, a lot of the volunteers that we would normally count on, but Brazos County is a title sponsor, so Brazos County needs to be represented. I invite the commissioners and the judge to come to the breakfast and, and at least cheer those, uh, volunteers that will be going out into the community, cheer them on, but if you could, um, schedule a couple of hours, March thirtieth, it's a Thursday, I believe, we start at eight o'clock, uh, we'll be at the Phillips initially, at eight o'clock we'll be at the Phillips Event Center, and that's where we'll have lunch also, so if y'all can come by, that would be nice, uh...
What time are you picking that off, tomorrow?
Eight-thirty, um, but I'm asking you guys to be there about eight-fifteen, uh, and Judge, they're probably gonna want you to read a proclamation from us, so I'll get that to our administrative aid assistance and, and everything for signatures. Okay.
All right. Any more announcement of interest as to possible future agenda topics? Hearing none, we will call for citizens' input and our concerns. Hearing none, we'll adjourn.